We've worked on this for quite a while, but he's got the synopsis.
We have been working on this for a hair more than a year, I think. Try to get this in place. And just as a way of background, Telmate currently has the telephone service that is used for the inmates at the jail. And we've been discussing and negotiating with them about putting in video services. I think they were here about a year ago, making a little bit more, and brought some of their equipment with them. They had iPads, basically destruction-proof iPads, or so they say. They can go into jail and this will allow inmates, for a cost, to communicate, to watch videos, to do things in limited nature. But it will provide that service to the jail. And we'll make money off it. So that's basically what it is. There is no upfront cost. If you remember, when we allowed them to have the telephone service, there was some upfront costs that we basically had to bear, and they took it out of our pay for a number of years. But this one, there's no upfront cost. There's no reimbursement to them for the cost of the equipment. I don't know how much money the jail will make of it, if y'all have an estimate or not.
Did you tell them that it relieves the amount too?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
That was a good question. I thought it was.
Any remaining debt, actually, that's paid off. It was part of the deal, but that's been paid off, so there is no more debt. There will be a repayment bonus that they'll pay us. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty-nine hundred dollars. They'll write us a check for that because of the time it took them to get this in place. And I'll be glad to answer any questions I can. The sheriff can just mingle the product and Mr. Manning's looked at it too, so it's probably a good thing for everybody.
Now, they followed up with everything they supposedly supposed to do for us then, as far as I'm aware of this?
Yes, sir. Glad to know. It took a while to get there.
Well, I knew we had some issues there.
It lasted a year, it did.
I know. So they have come forward and done everything they should.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Unless there's no rejection, we'll close this on the next list agenda. We'll be going out. Next item, discussed fund, provide volunteer contributions for school resource officers. I had talked to Darryl over at our side of the waste, and they did send out a mailer. I thought they were going to send a letter over to me. We don't have, we don't have that in our access.
I see, I haven't sent a letter yet.
What is, and this is a request from Mr. Porter, more so than anything else, if the commission is interested in pursuing. And we're going to put a letter in with our billing, ask for volunteer contributions for school resource officers. It's the only mass mailing that we do. But there would have to be a fund set up, and we would have to designate who was going to be over the fund. And any checks that were sent in would have to be deposited in that fund and dispersed however, you know, we felt like it needed to be, would be for school resource officers and any direct cost for school resource officers.
Just looking at this briefly, I don't know whether any provision about doing that would be a matter of setting up the fund and figuring out the details on how it's going to be paid out and who qualifies and those kind of things. But I think it can be done in just about a given time period.
And if the program added solid waste that they use, that current program that they use, if it would be, I'm assuming it would be capable to track, track that in there as their payment comes in, so.
Yeah, only concern, you know, if we had people just add money to their bill, they can't do that. It would have to be a separate check because it would be difficult for them to sort those dollars out.
That's what I wondered, yeah.
If it's something the commission wants to pursue, maybe we'll have it on the next work session or something. Probably not ready to put it on next week, but it's something that we do need to try to get done before July because that's when our mailing goes out. I want to try to get in that mail-in possible. Maybe we could secure some funds, we'll get any participation before the next school year.
Jason, are you looking at trying to hire another one or use this?
Depends on what, depends on what dollars come in.
How much you get in?
You know, and, you know, we don't want to be able to obligate what dollars came in for the following school year each time, so.
So it wouldn't be requiring, nothing definite?
Yeah, so, you know, I would suggest that we, we write it up to, you know, pay salaries for school resource officers or direct costs to having school resource officers. So if we, you know, need to buy equipment or vehicles or whatever for that direct cost, that looking at purpose. And then we need to decide who's going to be over that fund. I would suggest that we put a panel together and be over, I don't know, anybody else got any suggestions somehow? You know, how would we disperse the funding? I don't think it would be a good idea for the commission to disperse voluntary funds toward the sheriff's department. I think it would be better served if we had a panel to do that.
And that's be made up of law enforcement, civil war, individual citizens?
Yeah, maybe, well, I don't know, you know, just whatever we.
What is your thought on that, Rocky? I mean, without knowing anything that we do right now.
May you, Rocky, you said that?
I said, Rocky, I'm in, I'm in fear.
Well, the less money I'm over, the better, as far as I'm concerned. You know, I agree with Jason, you know, somebody from the school board, one of us, maybe one of y'all, or something like that, that sounds good to me. Depending on how much you get in, if you get in thirty, thirty-one thousand dollars, we can hire another one.
It'd be on a year-to-year basis, though.
Right, it would be. And I've got one man in mind that would hate that. I'm not real sure how, how, he actually just wants to work the Bridgeport area. So, you know, that's not going to work when you've got somebody at section putting money in there. They're going with somebody at section two, but that's going to free up the other two that they wouldn't have to go to Bridgeport ever. But then again, he may want to work outside of Bridgeport, I don't know.
I think for the expenditure of funds, you can have a panel to make recommendations. I don't think anybody other than the commission can approve funds being paid from the commission account. But you certainly have a committee that says, "We recommend this," and that's going to be it.
But if we're going this route, I believe we might ought to put stipulations with resource officers also, you know, with the safety issue. Because, I mean, you mentioned sheriff's cars and things, and no one's coming up.
Well, not sheriff's cars, it would be.
Resource.
Resource officers, would you?
Right, but I know they're going to kind of look back, and that's going to kind of throw a bad taste, maybe the sheriff's department. I think everybody's looking for resource officers right now, you know, for safety issues, in my opinion, so.
Problem is, they have to have cars.
With a limited number and seven-day campuses, you know, they have to be moving, but.
Well, I can tell you this, the last four cars we, we just bought depleted the federal inmate fund that we had been using for the past eleven years.
Yeah, it's kind of.
And so from now on, I'm going to be depending on y'all to have my cars. We usually end up buying one, two to four a year. The four we just bought cost us a hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand dollars. We can have this on the next work session.
Be good to get the Darrells who were thinking what they're.
Right, and we also might want to make sure too that you don't, it's not the way that somebody that lives, say, you know, one year, he says, "Well, I wanted to go just for like this."
Yeah.
With that many schools, that would be a whack by our. If people started saying, "I just wanted to go to this one school," and you've got resource officers trying to, you know.
All right, next item to discussion is Methanees Bridge. I think Mr. Daniel will have some thoughts on that.
I guess that first one, closest to you. Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff, and I just want to take a few minutes to talk about Methanees Bridge. I know it's a project among others that we have discussed, as possibilities of being able to fund it maybe locally, but I know we're, at least I think we're all in agreement that there's, you know, this and other projects are priorities for us. But I think, I think this one kind of necks out, and I hope this shows why, on something we would like to consider on taking action sooner rather than later. And so I just want, my goal today is just kind of just to bring some awareness and some information to you about this project. And then also, you know, for in the future, if there are funding possibilities, that we consider this as an option for us maybe going forward. And then lastly, I passed out a sheet before the meeting started, and it's, there's some funded in there and some scribbles, and I'll lead into that at the end, so. Methanees Bridge, it is, it is located near the town of Macedonia. So we're just, just south of Macedonia on County Road 43. Span South Saudi Creek, and it's at our DeKalb County border. This bridge was built in nineteen fifty-six, so it's seen a service life of sixty-two years currently. It's a six-span structure, the longest which is a hundred-foot span, for a total of almost four hundred and ten feet of bridge. It's eighty feet tall at its apex, and it's the longest and tallest bridge in our county. Constructed with a concrete substructure, steel girders, and cast-in-place concrete deck, it sees an ADT of eleven hundred vehicles a day, sixteen percent of which is truck heavy. It is by grading standards structurally deficient, and that's a classification given to bridges which has, you know, a poor or worse component in the bridge. And the problem with Methanees is the deck structure. So this, this bridge was initially, initially posted in two thousand nine due to the substructure being underdesigned. Thirty-four-ton triaxle lowered to fifteen tons gross load posted since December of sixteen due to that deck condition. And it increased its inspection frequency to every twelve months instead of two years. So the deck has large areas with deteriorated concrete, including large falls, heavy mat cracking, abrasion. That's a shot there of a hole that developed, you know, full depth in the deck. So the only option, once you get to that point, is full-depth replacement. So you have, you know, you have to go in and do a removal from girder to girder, so you, you know, split a girder on each side of that, and then the length of that is determined by deteriorated concrete that exists in that hole. In January of this year, we called in favor of the ALDOT and had one of the bridge repair superintendents that I was familiar with, he was kind enough to come out and change the deck for us. And it's a, it's an older technique, but it's a sounding method, and it shows essentially that the laminated concrete, it's pretty obvious by the sound of the chain when you encounter the laminations. So as we would encounter those areas, we also tried to mark those just to get a visual representation of how much of the deck we're looking at with issues. And as you can see from that photo, we're looking at one end, but the foreground of the picture, you know, it's checkerboarded through that side. And it's actually the foreground, the other end of the bridge where you just saw that large hole or spall that was full depth. So his, his estimation was, with all the areas identified, within the next five years, we're going to see full-depth spalls or holes. Just some shots here of the unsound concrete and the porous nature and the problems it's caused, and we're in the process of patching. And we can do some patches, but they're temporary. And so when you have porous concrete, mat cracking, and abrasion on top, the porosity allows the water to penetrate the deck, and it infiltrates down through the structure and permeates the bottom of the concrete. So the freeze-thall mechanism continues throughout that deck structure, and you'll start to see spall and exposed rebar, spalls on the lower end. So what you're seeing on top is a good indication of why things are happening, but when you get underneath, you really see the effects of the deterioration of it just being able to be saturated. So shot on the right, you can see where a full-depth repair has been done in some of these worst areas. I would suspect a hole came all the way through the deck and they had to go in and do some full-depth patches. Some of the spalls and the lamination occurring is underneath now, like I was, like I was referring to.
All of this is on the deck, right? There's none of it on the superstructure or?
Right, yeah, so, so the substructure is, you see there on the left, we're concrete from the concrete all the way up to the girders, and then it's a steel-beam girder, you know, super, starting super. You know, that's, that picture's a little deceiving, those are thirty-six-inch girders there, so that's one hundred-foot span is basically that longest when you're looking at. But the substructure is, for all purposes, okay. It's the superstructure, which is the deck, that's, that's the issue. Some more shots of some of the laminations occurring underneath. So then we think, well, you know, we know that it's a matter of time, this bridge will have to be replaced, and so trying to wrap our hands around the cost of replacing the longest, tallest bridge in the county, we arrive at some of the data you see up there. So it's, you know, we know because of that alignment. So the vertical alignment, it's in a sag now. We have County Road fifty-two that comes in on the Jackson County side, and DeKalb County Road forty-three that connects just beyond the bridge. So, you know, when we look at logistics on this and replacing it, we would have to make allowance for tying with those roadways. And to meet current standards, we would have to revisit the vertical alignment. So we're looking at a longer bridge to get it up out of that hole that it's in, and then accommodating the tie-in. So, and when you couple that with the, you know, I don't know how they could build it in here, but at least two years of the roadway being closed, we're looking at possibly building a structure beside that structure, and then trying to accommodate the county roads and the vehicle traffic while the construction's taking place to avoid the fourteen-mile detours. So if our, you know, your disturbing ground that hasn't previously been disturbed, so when you get environmental clearances and all the documents required to satisfy that, we may be ten million, we may be over ten million. I'm not, I'm not really sure, but just, just based on pricing that we have from bridge construction, as similar as we can find, we're looking at least three million just in the bridge, not, not the other items. So alternatives to that, hydro demolition, which I've got, I've got a few photos on hydro demolition, but it's essentially a robot that travels on a structure, and it traverses the deck back and forth, and it is on an angle, about a forty-five-degree angle, and it's intense high-pressure water, water jet streams that demolish the concrete, and this is calibrated in to a strength, a target strength of concrete that you want to remain. So this, this robot can travel on this, this rail, set at an angle, and it can demo the concrete to four thousand PSI, forty-five hundred PSI, whatever, whatever it's calibrated in for that deck to get the optimal removal, to, to rid the delamination. So the goal would be to get down low enough to where we're past that delamination that's in the top part of the deck. We're down to some sound concrete, and we've removed this concrete without totally demolishing all the mats of steel, all the concrete that's good, only taking out the bad and leaving what's good, and leaving a highly bondable surface for the new overlay. So you've got a clean, sound surface to pour back against that's abrasive for bonding. And that overlay, that's been around since the sixties, is a latex-modified concrete. It's, it's specifically designed to be able to use in thin thicknesses. It says there hydraulic cement aggregates combined with top mixing and latex emulsion. So this is, this is on-site mixing that has to occur to make this concrete, but this is, this is nothing, nothing new. The additives allow for, it allows for two things, or makes two things. It makes a strong, thin concrete, for one, but number two, it makes a very impenetrable surface for water. So it's a small, void type mix that's basically waterproof for like a little better time. That's a shot of a deck that was hydro demoed, and you can see they are down to basically that first rebar mat. So somewhere within that first two inches of the slab, you know, you're likely to encounter that first rebar mat. And you can tell there, it's, it's found an area that was worse than the other, and it's gone all the way to the steel and a little bit further, whereas it's left at home, the other areas.
What about those areas that come all the way through, though?
The areas that, that's a good question. There, we are likely to encounter areas that it will blow completely through.
What about underneath where it's not so bad on top, but it's bad underneath?
Yeah, the top is going to be the worst as far as condition-wise, but I think y'all's, y'all's question is the same. We could encounter an area where it's so bad on top that it's reached all the way down to that lower level, and when this robot hits it, it blows completely through that. That is pretty like a full-depth repair. So they come in essentially and form underneath and let that latex concrete fill that void and bond into that as well.
Which you wouldn't go right from girder to girder in a spot, what if it was, I imagine, a spall?
When this product is in there, it would be monolithic, so it would be able to carry, you know what I mean? It's going to be like a new slab that would carry instead of a.
So really, that's how it'd be like, because I mean, the temperature wouldn't bother it as bad, the freezing and the thawing, the air.
Yeah, once, once you prevent that water from penetrating the concrete, you're taking care of the freeze-thall. So that's, that's a shot of latex-modified concrete going down. This looks like either a half-lane application here or something, but it works with traditional concrete tools. Now, they don't have all the time in the world, and it's, it's batch-mixed on-site, so time is at the essence, but it's traditional concrete, it's traditional concrete tools, it finishes very similar to traditional concrete. And these contractors that would be solicited to do this work are familiar with this, and it's done in other states on a regular basis. Cost and time, two hundred and fifty dollars per square yard of deck. And so milling, hydro demolition, furnishing, sawing, latex-modified concrete, and water control, so. You may wonder why there's milling in there, I didn't talk about milling. Another, another consideration for this type project, and a bridge with this lengthy of spans and slender of members, is the weight we're going to add to the bridge that's not already existing. So, and our goal would be on Methanees to mill out existing and hydro demo after the milling to accommodate whatever we're going to put back. So we want to, when we're, when it's all said and done, we want to have milled and hydro demoed and taken out the same amount we're putting back so as not to add dead load to the structure and, and, you know, lower rate it further. So, you know, this is not done every day. We did it, we did it at the state, and I've got some slides of that, and had, had success, but I couldn't remember all the details. So we had Pat Martins to come up and look at it. Pat Martins worked with Ed Liberati's group to do the state project that we did. And Pat, Pat was agreeable to coming up and looking at, looking at the project. He is a bridge preservation engineer, Bridge Preservation and Inspection Services is his outfit, but he's located in Missouri. He was an on-Missouri DOT guy, and he, he promotes the industry for one, but he's also done it for Missouri DOT and then after retired privately. But he works with hydro demo, the, the other contractor side of it, to, to make sure projects are successful. So he flew in and looked at the bridge with us, and our main questions for Pat were, where are we at the stage of life of this structure? And where in the range are we for hydro demo even being an option? Are we too far gone? You know, do we have some time? Is there, is there a more affordable preservation, something we're overlooking? And he felt that we are catching the bridge, if we could act soon, at an appropriate time. And going back and looking at the state project, our bridge is in a lot better condition than theirs was when they did it. So we feel like at the stage that it's at now, we're catching it at probably a, a really good time. Maybe even it's in better shape than some of the others that have been done. So four hundred and eighty feet, twenty-two feet wide, that's the square yard, it runs out to two hundred and fifty thousand. Design safety features, ancillary costs, another hundred thousand, we're looking at three fifty. And then, they think they can do the work in ten days, but, so we think two weeks is reasonable on closure. This is the state project that I mentioned, it's on state about one-twenty-seven in Limestone County, over the Elk River. Really large structure, very similar to ours. Concrete sub, steel-beam girder, and by the deck. On the right is a present, to date, finished picture of the deck in its current state.
So that three hundred and fifty thousand, that wouldn't be with us, any labor?
That's all contract. Yeah, what, what we would do if we wanted to move forward with this is, we would pull, we would do the plans. Pat helped us with specs. He's basically got hydro demo specs, demo specs from Missouri, and latex concrete specs that he liked out of Illinois. So we would look with that and look at the ALDOT specs and try to, you know, couple, couple all that together and come up with a set of plans. Solicit comments most likely, solicit bids, and then, you know, make a recommendation for you guys to award a project to hydro demolition contractor. But it's all, it would all be contract work. Now, anything we would part, we could partner with and save costs, like the water handling, traffic control, all those things that, they want to move in and do hydro demolition and pour-by-concrete. So all the other parts of that project, yes, we would, we would do as, as we could to save money.
That's a little rare.
Yep.
One side of the bridge is Jackson County, and the other side of the bridge is DeKalb County.
I forget where you're going to say.
Is it all that bridge, or DeKalb County willing to?
Unfortunately, DeKalb County lines across the bridge.
Yeah, just, just to hear them in the courthouse. But if they shut it off, they would be.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Probably.
We can't afford to do it, and it's going to affect them, I don't know. It's worth a question to see if they, we will have to partner with it.
Sure, I can ask that question.
Can I be there when you do?
But I go ahead and tell you, it's our, it's our bridge.
Well, how does that work? How does, one side over there is, I mean?
It's called backing in the county line.
Well, I know, but I mean, is the creek bank the defining line?
No.
So it's past it.
It's past the bridge.
It's probably a quarter of a mile.
It's on the road, somewhere.
Oh, okay. That's what I was asking. I thought earlier you'd be saying the creek was.
Sometimes the creek is the line, and then I think.
Unfortunately, not in this case.
It's the southernmost or northernmost county off the bridge, but it stays, there's a, there's a method.
They had smarter mappers than you did back then.
They knew the pace.
Do that.
I think it's the, it's the southern, the southernmost county owns the bridge, if I'm not mistaken, and that came up in, in the Buck's Pocket project. You know, our line's down there, their line's down there, Martha County's there, and they replaced that bridge.
And that's why it's closed right now, by the way? Is that why the, it's up?
Buck's Pocket? It was repaired, should be open.
Somebody had posted a picture on Facebook about it being closed, don't you know?
For a second, I was sitting in the car.
Okay, so that's the, that's kind of, that was kind of fast and, and all the places, but you guys have any questions? Some good questions you asked, is there, are there any others?
A lot easier to get three hundred and fifty thousand than it is three million.
Yeah, I think three million probably wouldn't touch it. I'd say, I'd say you're south of ten, but more than five, seven, eight, maybe ten, maybe more. I mean, it just really all depends, but it's going to be a serious undertaking.
What would be the life expectancy if we did build this project?
I think twenty to thirty years.
Twenty to thirty years.
With the hydro?
I would say it would be cheaper to do it over twenty to thirty years. What, what do you think your timeline is before we hack the deck from the hatch, you know?
He thought within the next five years, we'll see holes in that deck. So we can do full-depth repairs and, you know, keep. So we can do full-depth repairs and, you know, keep, keep inspecting it every year and keep lowering the posting as that condition deteriorates. But, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna keep getting worse.
And it progresses. At some point, it's not gonna be a candidate for hydro.
Right.
And then you're talking about a lot more.
So what kind of timeframe are we looking?
You know, we, we can't put that robot on a deck and everything just shatter, you know what I mean? So I don't know, maybe we have a couple of years left, maybe one, maybe not. I mean, I really...
I don't think on whether or not...
It really does, it really does.
But with the hole that was already there, some of the deterioration, he thought this would still be the...
Yeah, and it was a lot better underneath. I didn't have any underneath pictures of one-twenty-seven. But the underneath of one-twenty-seven looks way worse than the, the Matheny's Bridge underneath. And that's another consideration, you know. You're gonna be left with that lower part of the deck if, what, it don't blow through. So as this thing deteriorates and effluence continues and those spalls occur and rebar is exposed, all that's still gonna be with you if we do hydro demo at some point.
And the hydro now, three hundred thousand, maybe five hundred.
The more places it blows through all the way, the more expensive it just got.
So if we don't take some action on it, this summer, we definitely need to look at it in two thousand and nineteen budget.
I think sooner, you know, sooner than later is better. But, you know, we can't, we've got problems like this everywhere. I don't know that it's on the biggest and tallest bridge we own, but you all, you all know and see it. We, it's, it's rampant, it's coming alive. This is just the monster of Jackson County, you know, for us. Okay, so that was the good news. Now here's the bad news. So the sheet, the sheet I handed, handed out that has the scribbles on it, I just kind of wanted to give a recap, basically, of dollars and cents on where we're at and how I kind of see this fitting into what, what we're trying to do now and what we're already obligated and chose to do. Thank you, Gary. So the one-eleven cash balance would be where I would assume this would come from. And so that looks like a healthy balance if you look at the highlighted green number. But then we also have to be mindful of the things that are encumbered or in the works. So I'll just run through that kind of quickly, and that's what's below it in my scribbles. Local road resurfacing. So I've got two hundred thousand there. That was, that's basically, basically gonna be the one-eleven portion. So we had somewhere around eight miles, and it may not be quite two hundred thousand. It comes out of one-eleven because, remember, a lot of that is material costs that can be paid out on one hundred. But I think that's very conservative and say two hundred thousand to do local road resurfacing. And we have federal aid resurfacing. We, we've paid a hundred thousand all rating for County Road sixty-three. We have County Road forty-two that's scheduled to let this year. So that's one of the asterisks by the seventy. It was a three hundred and thirty-something thousand dollar bid we got in. So our twenty percent match is gonna be seventy now. This hasn't always came from one-eleven, but sixty-three came from one-eleven. So if forty-two comes from one-eleven, we're looking at another seventy thousand coming out. Ninety-two, County Road ninety-two is scheduled to start this week, Wednesday or Thursday. And that's gonna be about three hundred thousand. It was near four hundred thousand, if you remember on the bid. But it's gonna be about three hundred thousand that's gonna come out of one-eleven. And I'm being safe again on that because there was a hundred and twenty-four thousand that's gonna be material cost. So a hundred and twenty-four, that'll come out of one hundred, at least three hundred, safe number, come from one-eleven. Then we got the concrete paving project that we were gonna use severed material tax from. We had thought three thirty or three forty maybe on it. It, we're working on plans now, and that'll go out soon, but we don't have those numbers in. So as you can see there from that one-nineteen balance, there's three hundred and sixteen thousand in there. And if it's three thirty, then we got another thirty thousand that could come out of one-eleven. So that puts us at seven hundred, if you consider all those obligations. And this was a three, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. So you see how close we're gonna be to our total amount that we have, so. I don't know that I can recommend pulling the trigger right now, but I still wanted to share this information so as to maybe guide us in how we want to do funding on these federal aid projects or any other thing, should, should, should there be other considerations.
And this, this bridge project would not grow up on for any type of grant that we know of or... Would it be a candidate you could just whip for federal aid or federal, like, those dollars with it?
Yeah, we, yeah, for our federal aid resurfacing project, yeah, we could, we could prop, we could do it with a resurfacing dollars, federal aid allotment dollars. I say we can do it. We're, we're moving, we're moving into different categories with it. So we're gonna go a federal aid route with federal dollars supporting that. So there'll be different considerations that we will have to take into, such as guardrail retrofits and things of that nature where we may be able to minimalize cost bid with local dollars. We could still do it with those dollars, but it could be, you know, more costly. And as far as us turning to industry to guide us on our specs, that's all something we would have to satisfy ALDOT with and, you know, which is fine. But it's just a, you know, it's a different game, honestly. So it, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a lot of review time to get through ALDOT. It's gonna take their concurrence with specs and plans. And it's gonna take full compliance with anything to do with federal dollars in retrofitting, ridge rail, anything, anything to make it compliant with today's standards. That's it? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sheriff's Department?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ford?
Hello, everybody.
Mr. Seuss?
Uh, no, I just wanted to mention one thing that you talked about here about a few months ago, about this building lease coming up on DHR. We'll need to follow up on that as soon as we can, tell them to say something about that. It's gonna be here before we know it.
Mr. Stewart?
Uh, just what Mr. Murphy mentioned about changing the meeting when you talk like that.
Yeah, next, next, our June of fifth is the, uh... June the fourth is holiday, June the fifth is voting day. So normally our meeting would be pushed to the, that Tuesday. But since it's gonna be relation day, I, I would say we move it to the following Monday. And let's just do a work session and meeting like we've done in the past.
We just have to put a notice up and get that?
Yeah, okay. If that's all right with everybody else.
Nothing else, so I'll... Can I take a question just there?
A quick draw there, right?